Okay, I'm officially calling to order the August 20th, 2019 school committee meeting of the meeting of the Manchester Essex Regional School Committee. So, public comment, I don't see anyone from the public, so we will move on. Chairman's report, we have a very skeleton crew here tonight, so I think I'll just keep it really short. I don't really have anything to update everybody on. I attended the athletics presentation last night, the fall kickoff, some big numbers there, so that's great. We have a new athletic director, Jordan Edgett, did I say that correctly?
You did.
So everyone, I think, is really looking forward to his arrival and to see what he does with the program. And then this morning, the freshman orientation. Kind of can't believe I'm here already with a freshman. And that was great, kids seemed really excited, the teachers seemed really excited, and I think our staff did a great job. I know there were some parents there who had questions about transitions and, you know, since I've done it before, I kind of remember where I was, but I think our staff did a really good job in making those parents feel like, you know, they're in good hands, and I think Tricia stressed that, which I think is really important for implementing freshman parents and freshmen themselves. So, seemed like a very boisterous group of kids, and they're ready to go back to school.
Yeah.
Not really. And with that, let's move to the consent agenda. Do we, since we have a corner, we can roll ahead.
Yep.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as stated with the warrants transfers, minutes of out-of-state travel?
And just for the record, there are no minutes.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't see any.
There would be minutes next time.
Okay.
There would have been the last set of minutes from June 18th.
We did those at the retreat.
All right.
I was taking the notes and I didn't convert them into minutes just yet.
Okay.
At the retreat.
Fine.
So we'll have to...
We did miss a yellow, so we still wouldn't have.
And we closed out, yeah, hung out minutes for last year.
No minutes?
Is there an out-of-state travel?
Oh, yes. Yep, it's the debate.
All right.
Okay.
So I'm trying to do the accept the warrants, the warrants of other transfers?
Do I have a second? So, any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Any abstentions? All right.
I'm a little bit curious, we approved the overnight travel for the mid-year team?
Okay, this part of the consent agenda.
Oh, I thought you just said warrants and minutes.
I just said warrants and, I just said warrant.
You said just warrants and minutes.
And minutes, I didn't say minutes, I said plus or minus.
Oh, he said, oh, I just cracked out.
I hope.
Well, that's all approved.
You did.
We're all ready to go. Subcommittee, subcommittee organization, fiscal plays, I don't think we can do that without the rest of our gang here, so we're gonna...
I'll put it on for next meeting.
Okay, move on that.
Did we do the overnight out-of-state travel?
Yeah, the out-of-state travel, that's part of the consent agenda.
Okay, you'll quit doing it, okay.
Yep. Thank you. SRO discussion, should we kind of kick that to the end, since that's a little...
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Memorial building project update, Dan?
I have that in my super's report too. Let me just give you the quick, everything is, we're moving on schedule. We are prepared for the beginning of the year. Teachers have access to their rooms and their in setting up this week. John sent out, John Willis, the principal of Memorial, with the back-to-school packet, sent out the initial recommendations for pedestrian and car access for pickup and drop-off. There will be a revised set of maps going out on Thursday, they did another site walkthrough this week with the project team. So there are gonna be a few more visuals going out for folks on Thursday, we figured that would give us some time for feedback, if there are any questions or concerns. We are, we are, John is working hard to try to track down crossing guards, he generously approved some last meeting. We don't have many applicants of any, so he's...
COA, council agent?
We have hit everything, there'll be ads going out in the cricket, it's on Facebook, it's in the Gloucester Times. He's having personal conversations with people, recruiting people off the street.
Okay.
So our hope is to, he has some sites prioritized, I think at the bridge will be the first place we put someone.
The what?
The bridge. The fully operational, newly recommissioned bridge. So that's in play, I think he feels like he'll be able to at least get two people to start the year. And the project team will meet with staff and students at the beginning of the year, whether they succeed. So we're in good shape. Would those crossing guards be core checked?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Anyone who comes under our banner gets core checked.
Okay. One broader question, I noticed in the, on the warrant, there was a bill that went to a GEO, I can't remember the name of it.
For vibration monitoring?
Yes, the vibration monitoring. Was that part of the initial project, or was that something WT Rich said, you know what, we need this, and is that extra cost?
WT Rich, I think, said...
Yeah, they recommended it, and there's a whole area of the budget for owner items, and so this was something that they recommended we add in, just to avoid costs down the road. And we've already seen how, first of all, it hasn't gone off yet, so it hasn't tripped the level that exceeds, you know, I think I mentioned that in the notes, but the other thing is that it's already enabling us to process questions that come in from people, to be able to say, yep, we're on top of it, we're monitoring constantly, and so far, here are the types of levels per day. So between that and the pre-construction surveys, which is another thing that we approved in the project, I think it shows John Rich's experience with these types of projects. So I think that they both fit money-wise comfortably.
Okay, awesome.
You know, we're all no traffic complaints or nothing, it's, the in and out of the site is going well?
It's been very minimal in terms of noise complaints or concerns about the site, other than a few people who are concerned about, we've had probably four.
Okay.
To quantify it, yeah. And so that's pretty darn good. And Christina's been the first point of contact, she's very responsive, but if there's a delay in response, it's usually because she's gathering facts, so she can have something substantive to say. So I think we're in very good shape. I feel the same, Avi.
We will support it by the project team.
Awesome. Okay, should we look at the budget update, or do you want to do the non-Meda?
The non-Meda should be...
Quick unless you have questions. Yeah, let's do the non-Meda really quick, then we'll do a budget update, and then that's a good segue into the lunch program. Does that sound good?
Yep, the summary of non-Meda is that we are simply updating the work agreements that sit in the policy manual to include the changes that were made to healthcare policy through the negotiations with Meda. So we've always carried through to all of the other employment groups whatever the package is that's been negotiated there. So this is just a memorialization of that for the other work groups.
So the update and change of healthcare policy from back when we did... Oh, hold?
From the spring. Language on the deductible, the language is all in here, Avi, you're much more expert than I am.
Yeah, we, this is all about creating the new HRA.
Okay, that's right. All right, and let's segue into, is everybody all right with that? Did everybody get a chance to look at it, if you wanted? So let's look at the budget real quick, and then we'll segue that to...
Not to belabor, there's one probably other thing to note that's in the packet, is we at one time were carrying a step and scale model in there.
I saw that was crossing.
That was outdated back to thirteen to sixteen.
Okay.
And hadn't been updated, and annually, what we've been doing is giving all of non-Meda a two and a half each year, and just applying it to the entire step and scale. So we really haven't gotten into the habit of forecasting out three years, so it didn't seem appropriate to continue to carry it.
Budget update?
Budget update? Well, I think we had the last budget update in June with the transfers, and basically what we said was, it's one of the tightest years we've had, but it was landing solid. I think we tend to divide our budget performance into personnel, and that was probably the tightest we've ever landed in, with all the forecasting that we've been able to do, coming in pretty close to what we'd expected. I think I talked about the fact that really, it all, I think primarily started when we had twenty-eight percent health insurance a year, that we started to realize that budget forecasting is gonna be a much more of a month-to-month type of endeavor. And so, as I've mentioned, and Larry's here, you know, if you have any questions about some of the things he does, I'm not putting him on the spot, but we've been so fortunate to be able to get a, with every bi-weekly payroll, a real close read on where we're at, it's really changed things for the better. And so I think we're just starting to take a look at where we're at for the current FY20 year, but we ended effort pretty much right in line with the transfers there. We did have enough savings to do the prepay that we wanted to do for the added district for FY20. So I think we knew where, so the major categories that we tend to talk about are salaries, health insurance, added district, and then facilities, and sometimes transportation. So there's really no news with most of those categories. We, I think we did end the year as we expected with health insurance slightly better, we've turned the corner, we talked about that, we had a good renewal for the current year, in part through the HRA and the restructuring. I think it's gonna be a new endeavor for us to see how we forecast the HRA, because that's a new forecasting methodology, it'll be a little tricky for us, because in a sense, you know, we're gonna spend money through the HRA upfront, and then the savings accrue on the back end, because we pay first dollars, you know, to reimburse. So it's gonna be a little bit later before we have a sense of that, but we will have a sense of it in time for budget season, is what our renewal rates are gonna look like for FY21. And so far, so good, as we get the monthly claims reports, that's been going pretty well. Again, the kind of catastrophic period has been behind us, so I would say, you know, we're in stable situation now, so that's certainly better than where we were about two years ago. So we'll have a little update on, you know, right now, my preliminary summer look at people coming in and going out versus budget, is that the budget's right in line, so that's good.
People coming in, going out, staff.
So yeah, so what happens, this is a quick reminder, we do a budget transfer in the fall, right before budget season, the true-up. What changed since February, when you approved the budget, you know, did people come or leave that we didn't know about, and what happened over the summer? And then by the fall, when we're getting ready for the next budget season, we start by saying, here's an updated look at the current year. So similarly, we'll continue that process, and you know, sometime in this fall, we'll present a budget transfer for you that says, here's what the current year FY20 budget is looking like, based on changes that happen after the budget is on lines. What I'm saying, and I guess I wasn't that clear about it, is that looking at the summer changes that we didn't know about, we tend to still be, you know, looking very close to budget in a good manner, so budget's looking okay, it's not looking... Some years, you have lots of savings, maybe people leave, you get people who might be a little less costly that come in, we're not seeing upside really, but we're seeing that we're tracking the budget. I mentioned healthcare and the kind of uncertainty, the renewal was good, we already booked some of those savings to close our budget gap, you may remember, that was one of the items we pulled in, and we had a gap at the end of Febru- January, February timeframe, so we've taken care of that, we'll just wait to see what happens with the HRA. And then the third thing is added district, and I think what we talked about before was that we were starting to see some movements and some placements that were, didn't fit our industry programming, and so that was a surprise to the budget that we are expecting for fiscal '20. We, Allison Collins is amazing at forecasting our added district budget, and it's, you know, when we set the budget beginning in November, December, through to January and February for fiscal '20, that's a big look ahead, and there's a lot of things that could potentially change, and she's doing a lot of managing case loads and, you know, student updates. So you don't always know for sure, and she tends to be safe and conservative in her actions. So barring real surprises that you couldn't have known about, which are really more people moving into town that we just weren't on a radar at all, we tend to have good accuracy. And so in fact, things that were forecasted, I would say, are looking manageable for fiscal '20, which is good. We did do the prepayment at the end of fiscal '19 that I kind of disclosed to you with the end of year savings that we were hoping to generate, which we did, by really having the budget freeze early last fiscal year. So that takes a little pressure off the current fiscal '20 year, but it's not gonna be easy. So we're gonna probably need to start doing things like, we have reserves that we use ju- just through the circuit breaker program. That's a state aid program, where they give you money every year, and you're allowed to hold it for a year. We tend to be conservative and carry it over to the maximum extent allowed, so we might have to dip into that this year to get through this current year. And so what that means is that when we come to the FY21 budgeting, some of those reserves that we're able to use to keep, the next year's budget in check might not be available to us based on the current projections. So I think it's not gonna be a walk in the park this year, I think the added district thing will be tough to manage. There is some additional, what do you call it, extraordinary relief, you can get through the circuit breaker program if your increase in single year is more than a twenty-five percent over the prior year, which is a substantial increase in added district. So if we hit that, we'll definitely apply for that. Again, those are things that can alleviate the current fiscal year, and based on current projections, I'm thinking that we might be going for that, but none of those will help us for our fiscal '21. So I think the big summary on really all of this is that with the budget freeze for '19, some of the savings we know about, we've put ourselves in the best position possible for the current fiscal year, we're tracking payroll, you know, accurately based on what we expected over the course of the summer. We have a big project to kind of make sure we finish well for '20 with the added district movement surprises. I think we can be okay, but it's not gonna be slam dunk, so we have to monitor that on, you know, a monthly basis. And either way, I am foreseeing that this is gonna present some challenge for fiscal '20. So, is that a fair summer?
I think it's right on target.
Yep.
Can I ask you about that catastrophic reimbursement, I may have misphrased it, but...
Circuit breaker.
Yeah, the catastrophic...
Extraordinary relief.
Yeah, okay, that's true.
Yeah, that's, because the state program, basically you have to notify the Department of Ed by, I think it's February or March, if you are seeing current year claims that are higher by twenty, one hundred and twenty-five percent over prior year, twenty-five percent increase.
Okay, so is that the circuit breaker? Is extraordinary relief the circuit breaker, or is that beyond?
It's a extra program within the circuit breaker program for extra funds that they hold aside for districts that are in a single year problem. The basic circuit breaker program pays, what they do is they say, if here's the state, based on the chapter seven, the foundation formula, here's what a typical student costs, they call that the foundation per pupil cost. I think they have a four times that number is a threshold for added districts, anything below four times the typical per pupil is a part problem. Anytime you go over that, they just pay the slice over it, and that's what circuit breaker is.
So you're responsible for everything in between?
Yes, that's right, and so it's, so we pay that every year, and every year circuit breaker, we get that little icing over four times the typical student cost. And that's not a typical added district student, that's a typical, any type of student statewide. So I think typically it ends up being in the mid-forties is the threshold. So a lot of, for example, you have an added district placement to maybe a collaborative, maybe you're getting five to ten thousand dollars for that student, not much, but it helps. And as we've seen more of our, more expensive placements being handled through in-district programs, our circuit breaker per year has really come down in the past, maybe it was around three hundred degree a year, and now it's right around one ten to one fifty. So that's, one of the benefits of being successful, keeping kids in district where they belong, is that you get, the downside is you get a little less of that circuit breaker. However, if you have a single year where you go twenty-five percent spike in your claims, in addition to that icing over the four times cost, they will set aside extra money to reimburse you for the spike.
For that one year.
For that one year. And then unless you have a second, a second year with another twenty-five percent spike, you got a lot. And so, for example, if we have a big spike in the current year that's twenty-five percent or more, we'll get the icing, that typical circuit breaker, we could maybe qualify for extraordinary relief, which will help us get through the current year. Next year, if all those kids continue, there's no extraordinary relief, because, you know, it's not a change, you will get the, your icing will increase, so our typical circuit breaker will start to go back up from the hundred, hundred and fifty, to maybe, I forget, I've been starting to do line-by-line projections, but it might be in the two hundred thousand to three hundred thousand level, so that'll help. But again, if we spend down our single year reserve, which I've been using, that will make it harder. So I think we have some headwinds for fiscal '21 in this area.
We've been using that single year reserve to do our prepay.
Uh, different.
Oh, okay.
Yep, so we, and we also use, so we use circuit breaker, let's say it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars at a given year.
Yep.
We'll hold it, and then we have to spend it the next year. So it just gives us a single year cushion, so that, in fact, what's happening this year, if we have a spike, as we're starting to see from even just a few placements, we can spend the current year for the circuit breaker plus last year's circuit breaker.
First thing, instead of being a spike, it's more a step change.
Yes.
It isn't a up and then back down.
That's right.
Yeah.
So what I'm looking to do right now to get through fiscal '20, I'm probably making it sound easier than it probably is, is that I'm gonna spend the current year's circuit breaker reimbursement, and I'm gonna spend last year's circuit breaker. Whereas in a normal year, I would have just spent last year and taken this year and carried it to the next.
So where are you spending that, the general fund, or...
Circuit breaker is a separate fund, it allows us to take money out of the budget, and so if you look at our budget documents for the special education feed, where we show tuitions every year, I do show a footnote there that explains how much we get outside of the general fund budget.
Okay.
So circuit breaker is definitely outside, but given, it's just like school choice revenues that we use for health insurance.
Right.
When the numbers get big enough, we make sure that it's clear what the total cost is, not just the cost that hits the budget, because if those reserves go away, or if the aid goes down, or something changes, we're on the hook for the full cost. So I wanna make sure that that's shown.
Okay, great, thank you. A lot of puzzle pieces, but the bottom line is, it's bottom, the top line's gonna be very tight.
Yeah, and it would help that, a visual update at some point, I can do that when we come back from the next round of budget, just to show you all the different funding streams for the cost.
So when we talk about the added district now versus when we talked about it last spring, it sounds like it's not as alarming, am I correct in reading?
I guess my big picture comment would be it's, all tools to strong labor, it's, it ebbs and flows. I would say if we were meeting a week and a half ago, we were in the black, we, some students decided to come back into district. A week later, we're looking at two more move-in added district placements. I think we aren't going, we'll, it looks good now, but it's unpredictable.
Right.
Right, so we could be coming back to you in October to say, somebody just moved in and they have a legitimate plan that we're responsible for, and now we're looking at another, I mean, some of the placements are in the hundreds of thousands. So I think it's something that people, we watch constantly, Avi and Allison work together, I want to say, talking about it every week at this point, it is just so unpredictable.
Yeah, and right now, we're talking about current year, which is sad, which is important, but as I mentioned, at some point, she's gonna be forecasting this fall for next September.
Which is nearly impossible.
It's really tough.
Okay, so... And just a quick question, sort of related, enrollment, where are we on enrollment? A lot of movements just summer?
As soon as I hear you, I have it in my little report at the end.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, awesome. Anybody else have any other questions?
I have the, our tie, like a summary of coming to go.
Okay, awesome. With that, why don't we turn it over to you guys?
Food service, great, and then do you want me to put this up on the screen, there's not many people here, I can just, we can just use our handouts.
Yeah, let's use the handouts.
All right, great. So I do wanna thank, we've got some guests, thank you, obviously Larry's here, I mentioned in my report out that I don't know if it can forward to you as a second, basically, as I mentioned, we're talking about monitoring bi-weekly staffing changes. We monitor our health insurance on a monthly basis, which is something Larry handles for us, we monitor energy purchasing on a monthly basis, and looking at our volatility there, which Larry handles for us now. We've been also moving into a monthly forecasting for food service. So knowing that now that we outsourced the program, and that the, some of those costs that used to be buried in the district budget are kind of becoming a little bit more out, they're really now a revolving fund, and it's just clearer what's going out of them, that monthly process is becoming really important. So a lot of what I do here, you know, is not possible without having somebody like Larry, who really keeps an eye on everything on a monthly basis, which is great. So every time we get a new invoice from Chartwell's, he throws it into our forecasting model, kicks the tires, and we're looking at a bunch of different parameters, from revenue to expense, to collections, to dissipation, meals, all sorts of things. So that's been great, so he really helped me to get a lot of this together. Obviously, at the program level, Paula Graham who's here, and Scott Valentino, who's the area manager for Chartwell's, we have a great team. I think if you haven't read between the lines or heard me say it explicitly, I feel like since we brought Chartwell's here, our program has really become a lot more, a lot, the management component has really gotten significantly. So I think we, I've mentioned some of the highlights in the overview, certainly with an onsite presence managing the staff, we have very little turnover in staff, and I think when we first outsourced, a lot of people were wondering whether people would hit the road, and I think that's really a credit to the way that Paula interacts with the team. And what I see, people are really happy here, and that helps us to really interact, how we interact with kids is really, I think, going quite well, so hats off to them. I think from my standpoint, you know, I tend to look Paul, find the bottom line, and having Paula and Scott as resources to me, I feel like I get answers quickly. And so from a contract management standpoint, I feel like we are in very good hands, and the accountability is very high, and I think I told Scott this one twenty-first Saturday, but, you know, I've worked with a lot of different contractors for a lot of different jobs, he probably one of the best I've ever had in terms of responsiveness. So I don't wanna just go on and on about I'm right there, I just really feel like it's a partnership, and there's still some issues that we need to continue to work on, we're not where we are, wanna be in everything, but I think you can see from the financial picture, we took on a whole lot of extra things that we didn't tend to have before, primarily with the benefits that were buried, and even with that, things are really heading in the right direction. So that's a quick preamble, I think they can help to answer any questions you might have tonight about the program, about meals, about food service, the food quality, et cetera. I'm gonna focus quickly on quick financial overview, a lot of this we've done before, so I won't spend so much time, but then also the fact that we are requesting a meal price adjustment, which we haven't had since fiscal '12. One of the things that I think you may remember me saying, when Chartwell's first came, we did wanna have collections be one of their top items to focus on, because we were trying to just get a handle on the program, and I think we really proved that, you can see later in the slides, I think there is a slide on collections where this past year was the first year in years that it's gotten in the, it's a negative number, because the balances are going down. So they're really, and it's been primarily a second half of the year push that Paula led to reach out to folks, which has been great, so I think that we are really just hitting our stride there. I think potentially, you know, we have a good opportunity to keep that stable, if not improve in fiscal '20. So that's not an easy task to do, when you see the business manager, Lister, from across the state, everybody is asking these questions about collections, and nobody has an answer. People go to, you know, third-party claim managers, and small claims courts, and, you know, collections agencies, and there, and nobody's happy with any of those solutions. So I think really, the best way I've seen is to be able to just handle it at a program level, and so I really appreciate the effort that Chartwell's has done there. I think in the past, I think, you know, there was a question of whose responsibility that was, and again, in terms of accountability, we've heard they love the Chartwell's, this is something we should do, we have other clients where this is not as big of a challenge as it's been here, and I think as the culture changes here, people see that, like, yes, someone is on top of this, and calling you, and paying attention, it's really taking care of the problems to a large extent. We're not out of the woods yet, but as we mentioned when we initiated the policy, we haven't seen that a lot of the collection issues are around folks who are in financial need, as much as of folks who need to be reminded and who need to be managed, and so that takes time and effort, and so thank you to Chartwell's for putting more time and effort on that. So that's one piece of good news. So we didn't wanna hit that right away, the other thing we didn't wanna hit right away when we started the new outsourcing model was the price change. I didn't think it would, part of the way I hold Chartwell's accountable is to not just say right away, we can start increasing revenues by patient, I want them to see what they can do, and I think they'll tell you that sometimes I'm a bit of a pain in the rear, and that's kind of how the relationship works, but we respect each other, and I think they've shown, the P and L results, year after year, which I'm gonna get into, and so I think that they've done the work to make me feel like we can now go to this approach. And normally, I don't wanna wait seven years for a price change, I think the fact that we have fees on a three-year basis with school committee is a great model. I can't remember off the top of my head when we're due for another look, whether it's one or two more years, but either way, I think this should set us up for a couple of years, I certainly wouldn't envision another change quickly, we might wanna get to a point where we have smaller increases every three years, rather than something here, which is really a little bit like a getting back to where we should be. Um, so that's just a little brief uh intro to that. And then obviously, we do wanna have the annual process where we just get authority from the school committee to close the, to make a transfer to close that deficit for the reasons we talked about. So that's the big picture, I can get into some of the details, I think I'm gonna try and keep the rest of this down to five to ten minutes since you've heard a lot of this before. But before I go there, are there any questions you have about specific areas you want me to focus on, or you want answers on?
Yeah, could you just remind us about the fringe piece?
Sure.
Cause I've I've, that, I understand it, but I wouldn't be able to explain it to somebody else.
Yeah, so if we look at um
Which I think means that I don't feel.
The financial summary page, what we saw was that in the um, if you look down, uh, we have fringe at the very bottom. And uh, right now, we're getting charged directly, we get a bill from Chartwell's for everything. We've outsourced staff, we've outsourced management, we've outsourced everything including buying food. So right now, in fiscal nineteen, it costs us about seventy-four thousand, you see that number, seventy-four, two, one, three, and I'd say it's uh three or four lines from the bottom, it's this fringe. Uh, whereas prior to fiscal, fiscal sixteen and prior, we had all the benefits outside of the revolving fund. So this is all, what you're seeing now is a P and L for Fund Seven Hundred, which is our school lunch revolving fund. Previously, benefits for anyone on food service staff were paid through the general fund budget as part of our single line for health insurance,
Just like everybody else.
Our single line for me- uh medit, care reimbursement, that's a one point four or five percent, our single line for pension. You know, we pay Essex Regional Retirement, well, in the old days, that included all of our food service staff. We paid money to Tufts or the Blue Cross, well, in the old days, that included all of those sorts of things. Now, our Tusville has no food service costs. Our Essex Regional Retirement, we don't have a single dime owed for pension for our food service program at all, because they're not our employees. It all comes through our monthly bills that we pay to Chartwell's, and with them, they probably happen to be a 401K, I think, instead of a pension program, um, and so that's what we get charged for in the area fringe. So um, right now, as you know, revolving funds are places where if you get money outside of taxpayer money, money goes there. We have a revolving fund for athletics, where user fees go, we have a revolving fund for school lunch, uh where parents go. We also get federal reimbursement for school, that was a revolving fund. So right now, the revolving fund is holding a hundred percent of the cost of the program. Whereas in the old days, a revolving fund had everything except for these employee benefits that were in the taxpayer fund.
I see, so shorthand version, you're asked the question?
Yeah, I didn't. Yeah.
Prior to going contract services, we did not assess the financial health of the program, inclusive of health benefits.
We didn't do an apples to apples.
What's better answer than I gave? I mean, mine's ten minutes.
It wasn't, it was, it was some big.
But I I appreciate that, cause.
No, that's the detail underneath, but if somebody asked, it just, we never calculated using round numbers. If the program made a hundred thousand dollars in a year, we did it against the cost of paying the hourly wage, but never factored in the cost of the healthcare.
It's kinda like an overhead charge that was never charged, and now, you know, we're charging that already.
I get it, thank you.
So and the other thing though is that the benefits were a lot more significant, a lot more people on them. So if you look at the estimates of what they were in the prior phases, they were in a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty thousand dollar level when it was on our dime. Um, and uh we just, that that cost is a lot lower. I mean, for, to give you a classic example, pension programs are very different in the public sector than they are in a 401K. So um, so that's one of the cost benefits of outsourcing. Mostly what we talk about when we talk about the benefits of outsourcing is primarily management accountability. So uh, that's basically helped us to bring all in loss from somewhere that might've been a hundred and twenty to a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, where we see that fully loaded profit loss down to where we're at sixty-eight thousand. You can see those numbers just continue to drop and drop and drop. When we went out to bid, knowing that we are gonna suddenly absorb this benefits cost, we said that the expectation was for a break even excluding fringe, um, but we didn't expect the fringe to go down by this much. So I'd say we're doing a lot better than we expected profitability-wise. And in the old days, when you got a financial report to what Pam was saying, you might've seen the line that says revolving profit and loss there. And you could see fiscal thirteen, thirty-nine fifty-four, fiscal fourteen, a negative forty-one, fiscal fifteen, negative fifty-eight, positive fourteen. See those numbers there?
Yep.
That was all you heard about, you never saw what was the line below. So the old days, when you got a report on food service, you really didn't get all of the cost.
Okay.
Uh, some of the highlights here that are worth mentioning, if you look at the revenue, it's hard to kinda get a sense for that until you look at what our enrollment is, cause that's changed over time. So we put in the meal purchases per student, and you can see right now, we're at two hundred and eighty-six dollars of fiscal nineteen. This is about, this is the second bold line on the top, meal purchases per student. Whereas in the old days, we were at the two hundred and thirty to two twenty-seven, this is without price change. So just on quantity alone, we have a much higher participation. So when you hear people.
We have lower enrollment overall, so that's great.
Well, this is standardized for enrollment on a per student basis.
Okay.
That's the two eighty-five, so that takes the revenue number, you know, if you look at fiscal eighteen, and you see four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of revenue, for example, and in fiscal fifteen, it was four hundred and eighteen thousand. Well, guess what? Fiscal eighteen's a lot better on a per student basis, two hundred and fifty dollars versus two twenty-seven. What's the point of this? The point is that participation is improving um from some some places where it's been. It's not perfect, you know, we're still not knocking it out of the park at the elementary level. Essex has been kinda stable, Memorial dipped a little bit, it's coming back in fiscal nineteen. But if you hear parents saying, well, what do you think about the program, and do kids eat lunch or not, we probably could do better on participation, but you can see the revenue per student with no price changes. That's just participation alone, it's been going up at Chartwell's, so they deserve some credit for that.
Yeah, definitely.
Uh, and then the only other thing, just to show you the very bottom, food is percent of sales, labor is percent of sales, fringe is percent of labor. These are all uh metrics that I use to look at the financial health, like true profit and loss statement. And you can see that food costs way down as a percent of sales. Uh, labor uh definitely managed much lower. I think they have a much better sense, working with many different programs around many different places, of what a reasonable labor allocation is, what did we have in the past? We had kinda what we always had, and we had the people we knew, and you know, it was much more based on who's always worked for us, and we had good staff that we liked, and a lot of them have stayed, but it wasn't correlated to meals or to 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 revenue or anything like that. And so you can see these uh very typical management metrics, I think, are showing that Chartwell's knows what they're doing. So that's, I think, is about as far as I wanna get into that item. Uh, but you can see the sixty-eight, four, four, four at the bottom right corner, that's the number that we're gonna be transferring, uh asking you to help us transfer, uh, it was seventy-nine thousand last year, although last year, we did two years at once, it was the seventy-nine plus the one thirty-five. Um, and the years before, you could see, would've been much bigger. So we're really narrowing this down. I think when we get to the, um, I think I'm gonna move to the price changes at the end. Um, we don't really know how much revenue that's gonna generate, Ra- Larry was helping me to kinda run some scenarios based on the current volumes of meals, and if we kept those volumes of meals consistent, what that might've done. Sometimes if prices go up, we can have a little elasticity and and maybe the demand changes slightly, we don't know.
Wonder what that breakpoint is.
Yeah, it might, it could be, and we'll see. But um, I think the prices that we are talking about are not, if you look at them for a meal, you know, and you think about what it costs, I just know when, every time that middle schooler expects me to get him a burrito anywhere, it seems like it's every six minutes. You know, uh, you know, I I know that I'm paying double this, and the meal options here are balanced, they're healthy, they meet all the Department of Ed requirements, there's lots, you can load up your plate with salad and all sorts of things. So um, these, even with the price changes, I think we're offering tremendous value. Um, we also show that, you know, real below, if you look at the ME, the top chart on the top left, we're at a buck fifty for breakfast versus most districts are already at one eighty-seven. We're at two seventy-five in three versus uh elementary lunch and middle school lunch for, uh, high school lunch for the other programs. We're below everybody. Department of Ed requires you to go through an analysis of your meal prices compared to your cost inputs because they wanna make sure we are not using the federal reimbursements we're getting to take the burden off of families. Uh, and it's amazing, when they came in, we did a review, how much, they wanna make sure that we're on top of collections. They're the ones who are forcing us to have a collections policy, they wanna make sure that our prices aren't too low, not things you would typically associate with the Department of Ed. What they're saying is, don't be, you know, taking, holding prices artificially low uh to families while the federal government through the state is giving you federal reimbursement, so.
Isn't USDA as well?
USDA is where the money comes from, and the state, the ESC is the.
I just remembered the audit.
They're the state, yeah, they're the state grant, uh intermediary, just like Title One and IDEA. Uh, the state is the intermediary, but they have federal funds.
Can we talk about the collections for a minute?
Yeah.
And how well that's going and how that is going well? What what are you guys doing to boost up our collections?
Do you guys wanna talk about some of the things that you're doing? Then I hate to put you on the spot, if not, I'm happy to answer the question.
Cause that was a black hole a couple of years ago, remember?
Basically, what I do myself is call the people and send out notices.
Yeah, and so you feel like that works.
And then I get a lot of emails back and I'll follow up. But a lot of the collections, it's because their child started with a negative balance.
Yeah.
And that's why they don't understand, because it just keeps accumulating, because it stays in the system. So, but I found by actually talking to people or leaving messages, I'm getting more reason why I'm just sending out emails.
Yeah.
On the register system too, to tell what child bought, and what time, and what they bought the table around it, you know, burritos. We can say, oh, here.
It was my child.
There's also notes.
Yeah, we say, does your mom know you're doing those?
Yeah, buy snacks for your friends.
Also, parents can, yeah, a parent can call in and have Paula put on the register, you know, no more Doritos for Billy.
Only one snack a day, not that.
Your mom, dad said, you know, your parents said, no, no burritos, or no Doritos.
Yeah, so when we send out the annual kinda update to families about the program, where we tell them how to access free reduced lunch, for example, one of the things that I've been highlighting, uh thanks to Chartwell's reminding me about it, uh which we didn't used to talk about, was how do you get into your, how do you set restrictions? So uh, how do you get into your account and say what you want? Or just send a note to Paula to say, please make sure snacks are turned off, or, you know, I don't want a second meal, or whatever. I mean, we, we've always used the school nurses to handle allergies, and we let people know about that as well. That goes to the nurse, which then goes back to Paula. But the the software is pretty nimble, and once people get into there, they start to take a look. So giving people a little heads up each year about that, ha, combined with the calls that Paula's making, I think it's starting to get people to say, I had no idea, something you hear. And I know, as a parent, sometimes I'm just busy, it's like, it's like, it's like EZ Pass. You know, once you put the money in, you go through the tolls, you don't think about it. But then every now and then, if you get a call from EZ Pass to say, you know, eight hundred bucks and off, and there's.
Big orange envelope, EZ Pass.
Yeah, so, thank you.
That's not a bad idea. Big orange, I think the phone call is great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's time to mail.
Personal touch is good, yeah.
And the parents can also log into their portal and set the reminder, five dollars, ten dollars, when they're paying.
I did that, and it's super helpful.
Yeah, I did that too. And that's what I've been doing too, reaching out to the parents, even I'm the parents guy, to when they wanna go online and do it themselves.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, sometimes I'll send it out, and it's good to be able to say, actually, we sent this information, but we're happy to help you. So sometimes those notifications are a little bit of, just letting, you know, doing our part, so people aren't surprised, but they often are surprised, and so it does take that follow-up off.
And the parents can even go onto the portal and say, no, I don't want reminders, you know, I mean, they they have the choice, so.
Oh, I love the reminders, especially when they come once a month, and I've already dumped a bunch of money in there. That's how I figured out my son was buying.
Around the date and the time.
Oh, I can see that, yeah, I found that, yeah.
So if you look at the collections page real quickly, it's the bo- and I realize it's gonna be a little confusing, but it's the bottom set of data that is really important. You can see fiscal nineteen, every school's negative balance has declined. So uh Memorial went down, Essex went down, middle school, high school went down. So across the board, uh, we did better. And really, sixteen was the only year where that happened before, and that was involved some writing off. So this is really kind of historic. We saw last year it, um, the amount of problems declined to sixty-eight hundred from ninety-three hundred. This is the first year where we're going back into prior year balances and collecting old money, so. So we haven't written all of that off, and I think um I'm just thankful that this is something that Chartwell's agrees is in their responsibilities. I mean, yes, I can make the calls too, but I think part of what you get with an outsourced solution is someone who just says, hey, this is fine for our business. So and, you know, could this become uh an additional source of performance? I think, yeah, it certainly helped us this year financially. Um, but I do think, looking at all the things that are going wrong on all the expense lines, the revenue per student, the collections, I think it does say that um they're doing the parts that are typical to expected now. I feel kind of fortunate to say that they're getting so many of the financial metrics. I think we would be wise to get uh going with the price increase. I don't know if you have any questions about that that I could answer.
Will the, will the price increase trigger anything from DOE?
No, I think they wanna know what we're doing.
Their, you, your point was that they were actually recommended.
Yeah, they won't tell you how much per se, they have a, what's called a, I forget the name.
Equity calculator.
What is it?
Meal equity calculator.
Meal equity calculator, which is a, you know, something that they wanna see that you're running when they did the review. Are you running it? What did it say? It said the rates need to go up, but.
And this may have some type of anomaly that anybody who's getting reduced pricing is potentially.
I don't believe, no.
Well, reduced prices set at thirty cents for breakfast and thirty cents for. Okay, so it's, so it's a fixed reduced price.
Yeah, it's not a function of our pricing, it's, it's.
It's definitely.
Yep.
It's a state.
Yeah, which is great, because it allows us to keep that benefit available for folks who need. The other thing is that we're gonna be sending out, um, when we do send out our back-to-school notices, which I'm hoping to do any day, um, we'll be letting people know that we've, we are part of the process now. Also, brought on by Larry, thank you Larry. Will we uh do, uh, the state has an automatic matching system for free and reduced. So I would say ninety-five percent of what we do now is all through an automated download, where we tell the state, here are all the students in the district, and they say, here's who matches automatically to participation in other programs that qualify you automatically for free and reduced. What that does is it it significantly reduces the number of people that have to fill out that paper application, that they have to verify and get into income and all that kinda stuff. So it takes that manual application pool down significantly, so we're gonna be sending those notices out any day. Larry uh helped us to get an upgrade to our software, so it enables us to get that automatic state matching system right into our portal, so all the kids' accounts get u- updated, that was a, all of the time. And it also goes right into letters, so we can send the letters right from the software. Thanks Larry, so uh, nice thing that's going on here. It's not working today, but it will be working any day now. So, yeah, so any other color you wanna add on that process, Larry, or?
Uh, no, just other than uh the new upgrade on the software is gonna dramatically reduce the amount of um, busy paperwork that we have to do in the district office, so it might be sad to find out.
Yeah, cause that means I can put it, Larry had a different project, so, so anyway, so thank you Larry for that. So we're hoping to send those notices out this week that say, you know, you should be getting a notice any day now, letting you know, if you don't get one, feel free to apply for free and reduced lunch, which will take many people off the pool who in the past just sent one proactively, just in case. So that's starting to become a a much more finely.
Oil, oil machine.
So, uh, any other questions?
No, thank you Larry, I'd like to thank Scott, you guys have done a great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, great team.
As evidenced by how much food my kids buy, so, you kinda can't say no to a second lunch, you know, the kid's growing like weeds. I appreciate the ability to check it out.
Uh, so yeah, I, and before you, the only other piece of feedback, I do want you to know that I do get comments from time to time. I'm sure Paula gets them sometimes too, from families in the community who ask. And I got an email, I told the person I would make sure the feedback was uh presented here, about uh what is our bar for uh food quality and nutrition, et cetera? And how much do we wanna be at the forefront of, um, I would say, healthy foods? And so my answer, and I want you to be aware of this in case you have questions, and I'm open to your feedback about it too, is that uh the DESE sets the uh nutrition guidelines, and we follow those to the T. We let customers um vote with their fee in their pocketbook about what they want. Uh, but they, DESE sets the guidelines, and the customers choose what they want from there. Uh, we haven't gotten into the business of saying, we want a whole extra level of food options that are more like what you might see on college campus, or in a hotel, for example, or, you know, anything that people might want. And there, there are private schools that look at those types of things, and those are, come with a cost. Uh, and so there, I don't know too many school districts that do those. I think the type of price increase that we're talking about is to cover our program already for what we're doing. And I think that would be between either a school district subsidy through the budget, or even higher prices, I think that's what it would take, and so from my personal vantage point, I. And so from my personal vantage point, I, I think it's best to stick with the D E S C guidelines. They're, they don't make everybody happy, but I think they are, it's just like the M S B A process. It's a statewide barometer that allows us to kind of be doing what a typical s- public school does. Um, and I also do see that, um, there, it gets very individualized very quickly to what different people consider to be, uh, avant garde and food health. And so it's very hard to satisfy all folks there. And so I think sticking with the D E S C from my standpoint is a great way to be. But I want you to know that sometimes we get those questions. Some people are very concerned that, you know, here comes like we're a top program in the state, why shouldn't our food be, uh, you know, considering something that's different? You know, why we.
Pay for it.
And so I, I just want you to be aware of that in case you feel differently or you'd like us to look at something different than what we're looking at right now.
Uh, no, I think that sounds really exciting if we could have like a sushi bar and everything, that would be cool. But I totally understand the budgeting aspects. Um, do we, uh, use any of the fruits and the, I guess mostly vegetables that we grow in the gardens and the greenhouse and everything? Does that get incorporated into the lunches or not?
It was for a long time.
Yes. Like at the beginning of, like last year, we had some product, but.
Not really.
Is it not really?
Not too much, no. But we try to make a salad and we would say, you know, it was from the garden. And, and this year, um, I, they planted fruit trees and I've been, there's fruit on the trees, but, um, no produce this year. So you said early spring, okay.
One of the challenges that we found was that when that program was envisioned, a lot of those items were summer things.
Right.
Which don't really align with the food service timeline.
That's hard. Yeah.
So that's still out there and I think one of the things that at some point we'll be looking into like wellness, you know, changes and updates and all that. And I think that's an opportunity for us to continue, uh, integrating what the food service program can do with our educational program.
Yeah, maybe planting some more things that would be right in the fall.
Well, that's what Mr. Gray, he came to us and asked like, you know, what we could use and so we gave a vote.
Oh, good. So there's some meeting coordination starting to percolate.
Yes, there is, has been some.
And over at, uh, Memorial, I know at the end of the year, they did some modeling and we just go and then decided not to.
Oh, that's great.
So maybe that might increase in the future, we'll see. But certainly, um, I do see that there're gonna be more conversations between the school level and the, and the, uh, food service program as we continue to just update our wellness.
Cool. Thank you for pointing that out about the D E S C guidelines. I think that's important for us all to know. Um, and I think until we kind of tighten all this up, which we are well on our way with your help to, to be doing, I don't think we can talk about taking a program, the next steps until we kinda tighten it up. And I, and I think we're getting there. So that's a conversation to have much further down the road. But in the meantime, you need a vote on this, right?
Yes, so I'd like, uh, two votes, it's possible, or one vote for two items. One is to authorize the transfer from available funds to closed, uh, fiscal nineteen food service revolving deficit of sixty eight thousand four hundred and forty four dollars.
Okay.
So moved.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Yes.
Propose transfer from reserves.
Yes, that's right, so that will be any funds that will, yes, and that would be from ending year balances from, from fiscal nineteen.
From. From reserves. Okay. Okay. Um, so do I have a motion to affect that transfer of sixty eight thousand four hundred and forty dollar, forty, four dollars, uh, from reserves to cover the delta on the, um, lunch.
Revolving, revolving, yeah.
The what?
Food service revolving account.
Thank you, food service revolving account. Do I have that motion?
Yeah, so moved.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you Eric. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, abstentions? Nope, motion carries. Um, may I have a second motion to affect a fifty cent price increase for fiscal two thousand twenty? Effective immediately, right?
At the beginning, start.
Yep.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you.
And, uh, I'll, we'll make sure to communicate that to families with the back to school notice, I'll bring it up shortly. Uh, and again, thanks to Larry and to Paula and, uh, Scott for all your help.
Yes, thank you.
It's been great. Thank you.
Great job. Um, Avi, when you communicate that price increase, I think it might be important to point out, it's the first one in seven years.
Why, I would.
Just to forestall any, yeah.
I think between Shannon and I, our kids are eating at least four lunches a day, so.
That's what it is.
Thank you for having us. Thank you for shooting.
That's probably it.
Well, middle school, high school has been doing great for many reasons. Part of it is because kids at that age really give you a lot, so.
Yes, we all know, right?
Yeah, fine, thank you.
Just wait Eric. Okay, um, moving right along, we are gonna talk about the booster M O U and then the S R O discussion, right? Okay, oh, and by the way, everyone, don't forget, there's a spread there.
Yes.
Please help yourself, thanks Paula.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm gonna help myself. Yeah, let's take a quick.
Alright.
Okay, we're back in action after our little snack break.
I think you said it, no, but.
Yes.
What?
I may have said it wrong.
Alright, we're back, we're back on film in session. Um, alright, so Pam, you wanted to give us a quick update on the enrollment?
Yeah, in my report, it's really just, we're set for the beginning of the year. It's gonna be, oh my gosh, next Wednesday the kids will be here. Um, this Thursday is our annual new teacher orientation. We'll kick that off at eight thirty in the morning. And that's just our introductory day for anybody who is coming on board new. Uh, we have new, uh, twenty three new staff members this year.
Oh.
Wow.
Uh, six teachers to replace retirements, eight to replace leaves or resignations, a combination thereof, and seven positions were new people or shifting people due to, um, reductions and restructuring. So there's some internal movement, some people moving from building to building, but we've also had quite a few direct hires. Now, this whole thing is prefaced with, I memorialized this the end of last week and I know we've already had changes this week in terms of someone landed a last minute job. And so I'll come back and update you again in September, um, when this settles in. The same is true with enrollment. Um, we're at thirteen ninety for enrollment right now. Let's see if I got this up. Um, we have a hundred and fifty nine new students in the building. Ninety three are kindergarten registrations, so expected, we exited a class of about ninety nine, a hundred last year. So we're basically replacing a class for a class. Um, we've had new resident enrollment at about fifty six. At our latest, our count at the end of last week, we had nineteen students enrolled in Memorial School from grades one to five. No new enrollments in Essex under residency, uh, three at the middle school and twenty seven at the high school.
Twenty seven?
Mm-hmm.
I have to report that ninth grade there were a lot of new faces.
Yeah, there were quite, quite, that, I think was the unexpected number in my mind. What I'll do for September is go back and figure out the tide. How many students did we exit and try to get a sense of, are these students new resident students or students returning from, um, perhaps a private replacement who hadn't been in the system and actually went through residency because they weren't part of the record yet, so.
So we had had that bubble that's moving through the high school now. So can you, do you have their, what are the, um, numbers in senior, junior sophomore freshman?
I don't have them by class, but the high school's up to four ninety four. So this is the biggest the high school's been in my time here.
Wow.
My, my guess is, if I can visualize my enrollment chart, we're hovering around one thirty at nine, ten, closer to one twenty at eleven and twelve.
So that eleven, that was the class used to be the bigger one. That's the biggest one.
I could be wrong though.
Cause I know that a number of kids, rising tenth graders have left to go to independent schools, there were quite a few. And I hadn't realized that so many rising ninth graders were arriving. So that's interesting.
So well, that's already.
Instead of us guessing, I will come back with some definite, I didn't just, I didn't break it down by class size for this one. Just be interesting to see how th- those bubbles are working, which I think are eleventh, tenth and ninth, aren't they?
Mm-hmm.
That the bubble was eleventh, tenth and rising this year, eleventh, tenth and ninth.
Yeah, I just can't remember in my head how many students we lost out when they came up to ninth grade. It started as, they were all at one thirty when they were at the elementary, but.
Did you say four ninety four?
Mm-hmm.
So the eighth through eleventh of this past school year was four ninety two. About, that's in the August, the ten went to, uh, state port. So I'm not sure who came and went, but that's pretty stable of, of rolling forward, I think, but I may be wrong.
So, so that's pretty stable. This is why I'm giving you it as kind of, these numbers are gonna change cause what I have on my residency enroll may not be in the system yet. So those twenty seven students, if three of them came in in past residency last Friday, they may not have made it to the high school yet before enrollment. So this number could go up or down, um, by the time we're back in September. So I'll give you definitely a recount. But we're still see, I guess my, the big picture takeaway, we're still seeing a healthy number of students coming into the system um, outside of typical kindergarten registration, um, each summer.
And if that's what we said would happen.
And.
We've always bumped that, that downwards at the moment, but.
I've gotta go back and track it, but I'm just anecdotally intuitively, it feels like we're on, we're going back to on the rise as opposed to feeling like we're in decline in terms of enrollment.
The number sounds big.
Where are we at? You all did.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, and just the, next Monday and Tuesday, teachers are back for their two teacher days. For Eric, just so you know, during those days, uh, the first day is usually at your building. Um, we started in, typically we used to come in and do an all staff on the first day of school. We had a hurricane, I think, my first or second year of year.
Standing.
Um, and we had to call school. So we had a first day for teachers being, if you can make it to school, come. So we ended up searching breakfast in the second day and everybody loved it. So first day, teachers will come back, they'll do trainings, staff meetings, prep their rooms. Second day, we'll gather as a community, have breakfast, welcome everybody back. We do, um, longevity awards in the morning. We kinda lay out, these are the big picture things we're working on for the year. Julie will share the announcement about our grant opportunity with Harvard and Yale. And Darcy from Hill is gonna, we're gonna let the secondary go and she's gonna go give that kind of big picture overview of the Darcy plan for this year. Cause that's a big piece of our work and, um, we'll be ready for kids on Wednesday morning, so it's very real.
Pretty phenomenal.
Yeah, we're excited. It's starting to feel real.
Has, I know it's a little early, but have you taken a look at the weather yet to kinda see what we might be looking at heat wise? I don't know if you, you remember Eric last year, but we, we, um, started with theoretically two full days and it was so hot that we pulled the ripcord and did two half days. And this year, we talked about whether or not we wanted to even just start with two half days. We decided to just start with two full days and kinda take the same wait and see approach.
Partly cloud your reading mid seventies.
Mid seventies, rock on.
Right, and getting cold at night, which I think is.
And I feel like this summer, it hasn't, the buildings haven't heated up to the extent that they did last year.
It hasn't been a hot summer.
Even though we've had some really hot days, so you never know.
Yes.
I think, okay. So that's interesting, so we're fairly stable at the high school, even with all the move ins and, you know, move outs.
Yeah.
Um, you know, just anecdotally, I'd say this morning at the freshman orientation, um, there were quite a few questions from parents whose kids were arriving, um, in Manchester from independent schools.
Okay.
I don't know whether or not they were already residents or, but that kind of struck me as, oh, interesting.
Well, there were at least two who had a lot of questions.
And then two more that I was approached by later on. Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, interesting. Um, all right, so shall we move on to the booster and then we'll discuss the S R O?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so to give you guys a little bit of, um, background, I think we talked about this very briefly last spring. Um, the boosters have approached us about possible advertising opportunities or ad- ad- advertising revenue opportunities. Um, and they really have their act together, they know what they wanna do. And what we decided to do is do kind of like a one year academic, academic year trial period where we would work with just the boosters and kinda figure out how the whole system might work, um, before we went live with anyone else. So we, it's, we chose the boosters because they basically chose us and they already had their ducks in a row and they're ready to go. Um, so what we have, um, tried to do, I think we got together last week or the week before and tried to hammer out some language just to kinda frame the whole agreement, the expect, set the expectations and just kind of have something for both parties to have in hand and refer to as we move forward. Again, this is a work in progress, it's a year trial, we're just gonna try to work out the kinks on both sides. Uh, so what we are proposing to do is rent the boosters space, very specific space at a specific price for specific timelines, we're time bounding this. So, um, the rental period would be one season, one, um, sports season, athletic season. Um, and we gave them specific places with, and they were places that the boosters had identified. Um, so we are going to kind of figure it out from there. Uh, so if you read the M O U, um, we have, um, I think right of first refusal for the lack of, lack of a better term. Basically, yeah, preapproval on the type of advertising, where it's located, um, what am I missing? Anyway, so it's all there in the M O U, we're just gonna do a quick read. I had, um, two quick comments on it and I think I sent that to you guys last week when.
I don't think they made it into the version in the packet.
Okay, so where is the M O U?
Behind the agenda.
Oh, of course, right there, of course, that would be the easiest place. Um, yeah, the only comment, well, why don't we do this? Why doesn't everybody read it and then if you have any comments or, um, thoughts, we can incorporate them? We'd like to have this approved into the boosters as soon as possible.
I, it's.
How do you guys feel?
Totally fine with all of that, it's, it's just a little confusing. Do the boosters rent, do the boosters?
Pay us.
Pay us?
Mm-hmm.
And then they charge the advertisers? Can they charge them more than what they're charging? Like can they rent it from us for a hundred and then turn around and say, we're gonna rent that to two hundred?
Yeah. We're giving a rental fee.
And then the boosters keeps the extra money or we keep the money?
No, the idea is the boosters keep all the money, but ultimately the money's coming back to the school through the athletic program from the boosters.
Through the athletic program.
I mean, all their money goes right back, you know, to support the athletic programs.
Yeah. Yeah.
So it's a win-win for all. We're just providing the space, charging a nominal fee, um, and then they're gonna take the ball and run with it. So that's the idea there. Um, actually, you know what, why don't we do this? I'm just gonna point out the two things that I thought should be, um, included and then do you think we can approve it here and move ahead or do we want?
I think if you feel comfortable with it in concept, you can polish it up, share it with the boosters.
Okay.
They may have some feedback.
Okay.
And then if we have to bring it back on the third because there's a major difference of interpretation as to what we were gonna undertake, we'll still have plenty of time before we get full into the year.
Okay. Um, so the one main thing I wanted to say about this was under nature, nature of agreement, uh, last sentence, N E R S D will charge rental fees on a per, per sports season basis, say that ten times faster, for each advertisement placed. But then further down, we say that we are, um, charging on the rental fee per fence section and per gym wall section. So I think we need to clarify that. We're not charging them per ad, we're charging them per section or fence section or wall section, so it's not per ad.
And the other thing is, is with, with our season under the rental fee, is that per sports season, if there's three, or per.
Yes. Yes, per sports season basis, that's under nature.
So it'll end up being three hundred dollars per fence section.
I think you write that in here.
Just to keep the language consistent.
Per sports season, okay, I see. So nature of agreement is, uh, that is written correctly, per sports season. And then if you go down to rental fee, that should also say per sports season.
Right.
With the fall, winter and spring in preference. Okay, and I, and I think that's it, so. Why don't we, um, polish that up?
Got it.
We'll get it to the boosters and then they can give us their ideas and then we can have the whole group approve it, the whole school committee.
If this is set to begin on August twenty eighth, twenty nineteen, do we need to, do we need to, okay.
No, no, we just.
Just, sorry, start.
Whenever we get it started, yeah.
So it does say already per fence section and per gym wall section.
Yes, but above it says.
Nature of the agreement.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, nature of agreement per, for each advertisement placed.
Got it.
On the last sentence, so that's.
It could be for, for ad space rented, cause it's the space that they're, they're occupying.
Section.
Yeah, each section rented.
Yeah.
Area, for each area rented.
Fence section or gym wall section.
See below rent, under rental fee. Four locations see below re- under rental fee.
See below.
Point down there.
I didn't wonder if we've got it separate.
Okay. Um, and then Pam, how do we wanna communicate this to boosters? Do you wanna send it to the boosters directly from you?
Yeah, I'll send it, I'll see, see the subgroup in Tricia and we'll s- we'll go from there.
Perfect. Okay, terrific. All right, glad we wrapped that up. And Abi, thank you for getting this all down on paper.
Yeah, just.
We were all kinda throwing things at him and he worked out, I think, seriously, so thank you. All right. SRO. I was not able to attend this selectmen's meeting, um. So, from what I understand, they did discuss the SRO and there didn't seem to be any.
This is July, isn't it?
No, this is, uh, last night.
It was August, not yesterday.
Yeah. Um, and there did not seem to be any sort of, I don't wanna say pushback, but there didn't seem to be any hesitation on it. So, um, I'm wondering kind of where we go from here on this. Cause the sense I got was that I think FinCon needed to get their arms around it.
Question.
Yeah, I think we've been pretty clear about that.
So you felt it in town?
I wasn't there, but that's kinda just what I'm hearing. I mean, maybe it's worth a check in.
Okay. So. If, if we as a team are in a place where we're saying, let's go forward with it, work out the financials.
Yeah.
We can set up a meeting with Greg to see if they're all set with it. Our proposal here is, you know, obviously if we can find it in the general fund, we'll try to pay for it from that. I'm not opposed to recommending reserves to get this off the ground because I think, I think there's a compelling case to be made. I think we're struggling with communicating the urgency or some of the things that our team deals with in terms of helping to manage students and families. So, we're open to advice on how to better frame it. Um, but I think there is a real need and I think it would be incredibly helpful for our team and for our students and to build relationships with the community. I think, depending on how much of a premium we, one puts on that, you may or may not see it out. But, I think the more we can be wrapping around our students and our families, the better off we're all gonna be, since there's a lot at play.
I don't think there has to be a sense of urgency, I think there just has to be a good explanation like you just gave. And I think that that is pretty much the argument right there. And it's a perfect time because we have other, you know, we have other pieces of the puzzle that have come together with the new dean at the high school level. A new, relatively new dean in Memorial School. It all kind of fits at the same time. I don't think anyone would argue that there isn't a need for more wraparound services in any school.
Okay.
Um, so, I guess the next step would be to get all of us on the same page? Yes, that's kinda where we are, right? That's where we need to be?
Yeah. I feel like we should be able to say that we are all committed to giving this a try, even though we may have varying levels of belief in it or commitment to it. Or, y- you know, we don't all have to be a hundred percent on board, but if we can at least agree that we're gonna try to give it a positive first step.
I am a hundred fifty percent on board. After hearing, um, Craig and Jordan talk about it last, the elementary.
I, I kinda don't wanna frame it as a let's give it a try. I mean, if we, if we tee this up, we need to commit to it. I'm pretty confident that once we're up and running, we'll, the need will become clearer.
Well, give it a try until the first year.
I, I, I agree, but I don't wanna frame it that way, like, let's give it a try. I, I wanna say this is something, you know, that. In the value. I'm thinking like the consensus building pro- process, right? Like, you get to it and everybody may not be in the same level of readiness, but everybody's committed to going forward with it.
Okay.
And putting our efforts behind making it work. That's probably a better way to frame it.
So. So I guess there's a, two questions, one I missed. Was there ever the presentation, the S and S, select board?
I sat down, so after we went to that meeting.
Yep.
Um. Abi and I actually had to go and meet with Brendan and one of the select women, um, I always escapes, so.
Ruth Curry.
No, not Chris.
Ruth.
Curry.
Right.
Curry.
Um, to go over the Apple Street issues.
Yep.
And when we were there, we briefed them on what happened the night, I think it was the night before that we had gone. And Brendan had communicated to, um, Paul, who communicated to us that they're on board, conceptually, but they can't be on board financially. And they're not in a, the Essex Police Department isn't in a position that if they had extra F T E that they could dedicate it to anything, they feel like they'd have to make a direct cut.
Okay.
They went on to say, but they're not opposed to, you know, opening up the process and if it's some, if Manchester can afford to spare the F T E to help make it go. They don't feel like that should stand, their inability to offer F T E shouldn't stand in the way.
Okay.
Cause the original concept we had talked about was, you open it up to both departments, anybody who's interested applies, best person gets the position. And then that department carries the, the, that person on their staff.
Yes.
And we pay kind of a contractual fee for the time spent.
Summer, or, and we pay that and then the department pays.
So, Essex feels like it can't go in on offering any F T E support.
But Essex would still, essentially since the district is funding the position, and we did talk about that, came up.
That would still be through there.
Yeah, and they would still continue their outreach efforts. Um, no, thank you, that happened. The second question I had was that, perhaps one of the things we talked about. Where we're gonna go with this and whether we give it a try or commit, it's kind of what metrics and what frequency do you check ins? And like, I would expect to see that the staff of the schools might say, oh, you know, our burden of having to manage to kind of, whether it's case management or something, has gone down and that. And again, I'm not sure what's within the bounds of what can be shared publicly, but the police department will be able to say, oh, we've had X number of interactions of such and such a flavor and it has been, you know, it's been, here's where we're at. And so, and I guess with that, we, we wanna do that quarterly or what the touch points are. Just cause I think about how I, the system is around, oh, these things happen once a year, these things happen once every three years in a rotating cycle, it sounds like it's appropriate to fit this.
And s- I think we can look, what we had said is we, we'd be looking for an evaluation rubric just out of the job description that exists. But then in terms of some of the work, so, you weren't here when you made the announcement. So, the middle school presented what their data ga- data gathering has been around, um, implementation of Ruler and some of the S E L.
Okay.
We think there are some questions in there, or that we can implant some questions in there that get at some of the more climate oriented impacts that the individual will have. And we're also gonna be partnering with Ruler and Yale and Harvard to do a broader study.
Okay.
On, um, the, the implementation of the, of the program. So I'm sure they can help us construct some questions and I think we can look at the, um, Y O B S as well. You know, it's kind of that, um, the question around, do you have a safe and trusted adult person?
Yeah.
Do they start to look at this individual as a go-to? But in terms of interactions, we could probably do some informal record keeping in terms of how many interactions the individual's having with people.
Yeah.
I'm sure Jordan might be able to help us with this experience of puberty. How was that person evaluated?
Yeah.
And I'm not, I'm not using that term as, um, you would evaluate a staff member, a, a teacher. Um, but there's gotta be some metric by which some success is measured, right? Yeah, so we'll probably do, we will do an evaluation for performance, but we'll also do a programmatic assessment to see if the outcomes are what we want.
Mm-hmm.
Cause we can have a wonderful person, but if the program isn't working or it's not a co- connected, it may not be the fault of anybody's.
Yeah. Okay.
But, I think it's an exciting opportunity.
Just have one quick question. So, I went to that first board meeting, it was brought up.
Yeah.
And then, I remember, I was, I didn't go last night, but I remember one of their concerns or whatever was around timing.
Yeah.
Um, so, was there a resolution to that? Cause I remember they were saying, oh, maybe we should wait until January or whatever. I didn't know if we.
There's no hard, let's get it done by date.
Yep.
I was, I felt to push her as soon as possible, just to keep kind of momentum going.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, I think if we feel like we have the, all the committee's blessings to go forward, we can get the core team together and we can probably post it beginning of September. And remind us how that hiring process goes and how that person is chosen. We have final say on the fit.
Yeah.
Right, we can build that hiring committee just like we build a hiring committee here, but we'd also include the two chiefs.
Mm-hmm.
So that they have comfort level and skills that the person's bringing to the table. So it gets posted, um, in any eligible, um, any person who meets the qualifications and is interested in the job can apply for it. But the new law, the new regs that came out of the Attorney General made sure that the school had basically oversight over the process. So you've got someone who was a fit for kids, not just someone who had good, um, security skills.
Yep. Okay. Okay, so, why don't we continue this, put it on the agenda for our next meeting and then try to come to a, I don't know if we can formally vote on it, but sort of a level of su- support. See where we are with that.
That'd be great. I think if we could kinda move to a common, um, understanding that we're going forward, we could probably have the thing fully executed no later than the end of the first quarter. It'd be great.
Terrific.
One, I guess, one of the questions I have, just because it probably makes sense to go in, also, as you mentioned, and I really, I haven't heard, the, I haven't specifically gone out, probably cause I missed the, the last meeting. The concerns that people have and i- i- if, if any of those can be put together, you know, even anonymized, these are the concerns, these are this, cause we're also gonna be getting feedback from the communities as well, even as it goes on.
Mm-hmm.
That might be good just as a way of metric or revisiting.
We could probably publish the MOU. I think that MOU that I had sent out that people felt was very legalistic and dense. Really does get at what we hear most frequently about the concerns and it's about the civil rights of the students.
Yes.
Um, and.
Sure.
Yeah, and combating that feeling like the person, the individuals in the building to be a police presence and do police business.
Well, and again, I like, I think, it's probably a point of contrast in that what exists already within the kind of how the police department's in town operated.
Mm-hmm.
It's like, yes, this is just formalized to that, add this, but they already have and do, or, that might be good, or what's the incremental?
Yeah.
The job description in that MOU I think was spot on. MOU takes care of the technical underlying and the, the job description kinda lies out the programmatic.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if you take that out and maybe, you know, if we get to a place where we need to publish it or I, you know, whatever, we may not need to, um, take that piece out. And I think that pretty much speaks for itself.
Mm.
So, um, all right, so we'll move this to the next meeting, the next agenda. Um, you know, we see, there are a couple of things we seem to be pushing, kicking hands up really.
Before we close out SRO, it's kind of tangentially related, but I should've included in my report that M E Hub is going to be ready to go live.
Yes.
And we'll make the announcement at the beginning of the year. Lynn Orna and Michelle Kempsey have done a lot of work and given a lot of their personal time to get this up and off the ground. And I think that's another piece that complements the concept of wrapping around kids and being a resource for families, um, that the school is here to help, but we can't be the only answer. So I think putting these pieces together and then giving people and the teams some time to kinda go out there and make it work is gonna be really helpful to our student body and the families.
Yeah, I just wanna say a special thank you to Lynn and Michelle because that website is fantastic. I mean, anything you could think of, they've covered it and they have covered it in such an efficient, user-friendly and really attractive and easily navigable, did I say that correctly?
Yes.
Fashion. Um, anything you want, you just click and intu- it's so intuitive and it's beautiful to look at, easy to navigate and thank you. Because that's the third leg of the stool that we so badly need it.
Mm-hmm.
It's really good on mobile, too.
Oh, yes.
So, I really tested it out on my phone. That's why the comments are beautiful on my phone.
Oh, I, I was on my, um, iPad. Oh, so we can use it on all kinds of things, phones, iPads, computers.
It is, they have it. Yeah.
It's a home run. So, thank you, thank you, thank you, cause I know how much time and how much effort and how much energy we're going to back, so thank you. Much appreciated.
That's just the start.
That is just the start. Um, so, with that, do we have any other, uh, school committee comments? No? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move.
All in favor?
All right.